Good evening Wareham and welcome to the Select Board meeting of September 17th, 2024. May I have a roll call please?
Present tonight is a member Sherri Quirk, myself Ronald Bessie, Chair Judith Whiteside, and remote we're expecting Attorney Bowen and I believe Town Administrator Derek Sullivan.
Correct, and absent will be?
Sarah Corbett and Jared Chadwick.
There is a quorum, I declare a quorum present. May I have the pledge of allegiance please, Mr. Bessie?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight's formal agenda, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Bob White, known as William R.C. White, who died several weeks ago. Bob was instrumental in bringing the moving wall to Wareham. He was a longtime volunteer and employee of WCTV and was well-known around town. He also created a documentary basically of interviews with local veterans which will be and can be shown and will be shown again around Veterans Day. So I would ask for a moment of silence for Bob White. Thank you. Residents comments. Comments on non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes and there will be no more than 10 minutes per meeting. Based on past practice, the Select Board will not respond or comment. Is there anyone here who chooses to address this board on a non-agenda item? No, thank you very much. We will go to announcements, Ms. Quirk?
Yes, I have a couple. First, I would like to note that I have attended the first meeting of a new Serpent Committee called the Regional Environmental Planning Committee. Had its first meeting last week and it's, this is a small committee of representatives of the South Coast region. Its focus is on a number of issues of regional importance in the environmental and energy areas. We worked on a list of priorities and are looking at developing action items to bring funding and activity to the region in especially water quality issues. So that's exciting.
What's the name of it again please?
It's the Serpent Regional Environmental Planning Committee.
Thank you.
And I will send if you like a list of the priorities that they sort of came out of the box with.
That would be great, thank you.
Next, we're looking at earth removal bylaws and last week I went and met with the Chair of the Carver Earth Removal Committee and a member of the Cranberry Growers Association. They gave me a tutorial on the Carver Earth Removal Regulations. I understand it much better now and have some thoughts going forward, which I will share as time unfolds.
Field trip to Carver.
Yes.
Great.
Sorry. I know it doesn't get much better than that except the third thing that I'm going to say is that I went Sunday before last to the, remember you all have voted me to become a member of the South Coast Bike Way Alliance, which is an association of the towns in the South Coast who are working on interconnecting and otherwise working on bike paths. And with Alan's help, I met with the leadership of this group at the beginning of their, what I recognized when I got there was a very large annual bike ride. I found myself in a field with about 130 bicyclists who were on their way on a 35-mile, well, it was planned to be 35 miles, bike ride through Dartmouth, Fairhaven, that region. And very interesting group, very large, large group of people and very determined. So I'm hoping that they can provide us some help in putting together some safe practices for the town and seeing what we can do to be helpful in this interconnecting bike path organization. And that's really it.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion to appoint a clerk pro tem, as in Mr. Bessie, because Mr. Chadwick is not here. May I have a motion please?
I saw move.
Second.
Excellent. There is a motion on the floor to appoint Mr. Bessie as clerk pro tem. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Clerk pro tem has been appointed, sorry. Your turn on announcements.
All right, just a couple here. We've got a couple of things going on here in town at the end of the month. I'll start with, let me just pull it up here on my phone so I don't mess it up. So on September 28th, from 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. will be the Harvest Moon Festival down at the Band Shell at Onset. That's One Union Ave. There'll be a classic car show, over 100 vendors, food trucks, petting zoo, live music all day, free admission. It's a great time if you've got nothing to do and you want to go spend an afternoon down at Onset. You know Kat and her team always do a great job of putting that on year over year. And whenever I think it can't get better, they always outdo themselves and it becomes better. So if you have some time to go out and support that cause, that's definitely a great time. And then the rain date will be 9/29. We'll hope for no rain and, but if so, it would be on the Sunday. The second thing is Best Friends Learning Center over at 237 Sandwich Road on the same day, September 28th, from 10:00 to 2:00 will be doing their annual Best Friends Carnival. It is free to the public. Their note says, "Join us in our annual carnival on September 28th, 2024, from 11:00 to 2:00 at 237 Sandwich Road in Wareham. Food truck, train and fire truck rides, a petting zoo, a reptile exhibit, pony rides. They'll have a mechanical cow for the kids to ride, face painting, a math science show, bumper cars, carnival games, food and more." I've had the pleasure of going to this several times as I have children that go to that center and have for several years. And Maria always outdoes herself with putting this on for the kids. It's something she does every year. She believes in giving back to the kids and giving them something extra to do every year. It's a good time. I encourage you if you have children or even if you don't have children, you just kind of want to see what they're doing over there in the two different locations that they have. It's from 11:00 to 2:00. I know it kind of runs in a, you know, hand in hand with the Harvest Moon Festival, but if you have a little bit of time and you have some kids and you want to swing by for something for the kids to do before you go down to Onset, I encourage it. It is a really good time and it's another great cause to support. As I said, it's something that she does free for the kids. There's no charge and it's just a really good time. That's it.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. Tomorrow evening at the VFW in Onset, there will be a fundraising dinner for the annual parade, the Veterans Day Parade. Tickets are $15 at the door. You can either stay and eat or pick your meal up and go. There are some wonderful raffle prizes as well that the VFW will be running the raffle for us, for the VFW, for the parade, for the fundraiser. Also this weekend is the Don't Trash Wareham revival of, let's pick it up guys because it's really getting to look bad around the sides of the roads. From 10:00 to 3:00 both on Saturday and on Sunday, we have encouraged people to join up with the Don't Trash Wareham. There've been plenty of ads on Facebook. There are a lot of little blue signs all over town, both in Onset and Wareham. The volunteers, you simply go online and you don't have to sign up, but this has been something that worked really, really well. It started off with a former select person walking in here with three plastic bags, clear plastic bags, full of nip bottles that she had picked up on the side of the road in a very small area about like this. So that was the impetus for having a group of citizens start Don't Trash Wareham. So we encourage you to pick up trash and there will be cars picking up the bags if you are not able to take them to the town barn where there will be a dumpster. You don't need to use blue bags and please don't bring tires. Don't bring junk from your backyard. It's picking up the sides of the roads and town property, playgrounds, beaches, et cetera. And thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to skip over to Mr. Foster who is our town treasurer and have him talk to us about the bond anticipation note for the middle high school roof. Would you identify yourself for the record sir and then we will go forward.
John Foster, I'm the Finance Director Treasurer Collector for the town. So we went off to bid back on the 11th for $3.8 million in bond anticipation notes. That's for the Wareham Middle School roof. That is a one-year ban. The town received three bids. Lowest bid came in from Fidelity Capital Markets with a net interest cost of 3.23%. The prorata interest is 152, but we received a premium of $29,260, bringing it down to 3.23%. That should cover us until the end of the project. They should be wrapping up shortly on the roof, but we'll be waiting for our MSBA payments, our reimbursement to coming, to come in over the next year. They've been pretty slow recently on their turnaround. So this will cover us, this will take us into next fiscal year. Hopefully the rates will come down by then. And that's it, that's about it.
Thank you. Can you just tell the public what our bond rating is please?
Bond rating is AA+ from Standard and Poor's.
And that is an?
One step below AAA.
Which is an extraordinarily wonderful accomplishment for the town and I congratulate you and Mr. Sullivan and your teams. Okay, what, you need us to do a reading of the vote, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bessie who promises to read faster than Mr. Chadwick.
No pressure. All right. The vote of the Select Board. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Wareham, Massachusetts certify that at a meeting of the Board held September 17th, 2024, of which meeting all members of the Board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the Board in my custody. Voted that we hereby determine in accordance with General Law Chapter 70b that the cost of the Wareham Middle School project authorized by vote of the town passed on April 24th, 2023, Article 18, being financed with proceeds of the notes defined below, together with all other bonds and notes of the town previously issued to pay costs of this project, does not exceed the portion of the total cost of the project that is not being paid by the school facilities grant and where, and we hereby approve this issuance of notes and bonds to finance this project under General Law Chapter 70b. Further voted to approve the sale of $3,800,000, 4% general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes, of the town dated September 26, 2024 and payable September 26, 2025, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a Division of National Financial Services LLC, at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $29,260. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sales of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 4th, 2024, and a final official statement dated September 11th, 2024, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manual executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures of any and of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or, if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 2903 subsection 2b. At least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remained so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law Chapter 30a subsection 18-25 as amended, dated September 17th, 2024.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the signature by the clerk of all of the motions that he made. We all set, Mr. Foster? Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Can you sign it please? Do you have the original? Do you have the original?
It should be in your packet. They printed out all the signature pages and I checked it when I was upstairs yesterday.
Do you want to step forward and before you leave, why don't you just double check that this is all set sir? Thank you very much, Mr. Foster. And again, congratulations on maintaining an outstanding bond rating. Wonderful news. Thank you. While he's double checking that, I'm going to go back to Wanda Savery. Could you step forward, identify yourself and speak to us about why you would like to serve on the Recycling Committee? Yeah, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I was, I was a volunteer.
You need to identify yourself for the record please.
I'm Wanda Savery.
Thank you.
I was, I volunteered at the recycling facility for years. I was on the committee for years. I hit pause, took a little break and now I just want to get involved again. So that's why I applied to be on the committee.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Savery?
No, all I can say is thank you for being willing to step back up into another role in helping the town.
I think it's an important resource for the town. A lot of people use it and like it.
Can you tell us where it's located please?
It's on Cranberry Highway, Jack Dixon's Recycling Center.
Which is?
Not too far from the Els.
How do you get there? For the people who don't know how to get there?
Depends on where they're coming from. You can come off of 25, I don't know what exit that is, and go up to Depot Street and take a left and come back and go towards 25 again, or you can come along 28, both directions and access the facility.
And what are the hours again please?
I haven't volunteered in a while. I think they changed them. I work on Saturdays, so I won't be able to volunteer at the center until winter.
Okay.
It's Wednes, Saturday I believe 9:00 to 1:00 or 9:00 to 12:00, they may have cut back, and Wednesdays 1:00 to 3:00 I believe, just those two days.
Excellent. Any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to accept a motion to appoint.
I make a motion to appoint to the Recycling Committee new member appointment term to expire June 30th, 2027 for Wanda Savery.
Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to appoint to a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Miss, myself, yes, it is so. Ms. Savery, you will need to take the ethics course, the open meeting law course, the other documentation and you will get an email from our office. Thank you, Mr. Foster. You will get an email from our, from our office letting you know when the paperwork is ready to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, have a great night.
Okay. No hearings, listeners. Town business, okay. May I have a motion to accept the generous donation from the Friends of the Wareham Council on Aging?
I make a motion to accept the donation from the Friends of the Wareham Council on Aging to the Wareham Council on Aging in the amount of $1,218.87.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to accept the donation. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Bessie, let's have a discussion, a possible vote on the HCA. There is a document for coastal cultivars, a re-renovated host community agreement. Mr. Sullivan, do you choose to address it in any fashion or not?
No, these are the typical ones for the HCA in accordance with the new regulations from the Cannabis Control Commission, so you know, we have to adhere to their guidelines, so nothing crazy about them.
Excellent. So the motion would be to authorize you to sign it on behalf of the town, is that correct? Yes?
Yes.
Go ahead. Any questions of Mr.?
My only question is, as I understand this Derek, this is a boilerplate agreement. Everything in it is prescribed by state law regulations and so we're simply approving the form of agreement that the state provides?
Correct. The only other thing we've had in some of these is a mutual indemnification because the Cannabis Control Commission created a, you know, a possible issue. You've seen some other communities get sued for back fees and everybody that we've already signed that would have had something like that has signed off and indemnified us on that, which has been really, that's been very helpful. Attorney Bowen put that in as town council and really helped to mitigate any of our exposure.
Thank you.
Did we have a motion yet?
No.
May I have a motion?
Yep. So I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the host community agreement for coastal cultivars on behalf of the town.
Coastal cultivars, I believe.
Cultivars.
Is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the town administrator to sign. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Sullivan, you're all set to go on that one. The next item is discussion and possible vote regarding a cash surety agreement for 59 Main Street Warren QOZB LLC for $93,000. In the packet you have backup information. There's a letter from Mr. Schultz, the Chair of the Planning Board. The surety agreement, the cash surety agreement is to make sure that the work that has not yet been completed on the project at Mr. Warren's Harborside location is in fact done. The estimate by the, what do you call this person? The person who works for the planning board who?
The consulting engineer.
Consulting engineer, sorry, thank you, came up with a little bit less than $93,000, so we rounded it up. All of the documentation is in order and the cash surety would be in the form of a certified check or cashier check delivered to the planning board office tomorrow. It will then be deposited in the town's account on that particular project. Is there any questions or are there any questions?
I have a question. This is for Attorney Bowen. Attorney Bowen, are you happy with this arrangement and do you believe that it meets the town's pertinent bylaws?
Yes ma'am, and I just wish that Mr. Alan Slaven were around to see someone finally put up a cash fund since that's what he always wanted.
I'm sure he's watching.
He's clicking his heels.
May I have a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to accept the cash surety agreement for 59 Main Street Warren QOZB LLC for $93,000.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Once the work has been completed, the planning board will come back to this board to certify that the work has in fact been done. If it doesn't get done, then the town will take the surety and finish the job itself. We hope that doesn't happen, but that's the process that is followed. Discussion and possible vote to do the curbside abatement, so I'm just going to accept a motion please.
I make a motion to accept the Municipal Maintenance Department's abatement recommendations on curbside billing for $3,653.32 for fiscal year 2025.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. And, ah, Mr. Bessie. So the town meeting warrant, the town meeting will be held on October 28th at 7:00 in the Wareham High School Auditorium. We are here this evening to close the warrant and in order to do that, Mr. Bessie is going to read that there are 19 articles. He will read the names of those articles or the titles that we have assigned them in the office. Tomorrow, the warrant will be served on the Finance Committee. We posted it, the town clerk, posted on the town website, delivered to the town moderator and each one of us will get a copy. It says draft on it tonight, but it will say, once we approve it, it will, the word draft will go away. So Mr. Bessie, I will ask you to make a motion to include these articles as listed and named, please.
So I make a motion to include the following articles in the 2024 Annual Fall Town Meeting, Articles 1 through 19, read as follows. Article 1, Approve and Fund Fiscal Year 25 Capital Plan. Article 2, Transfer of Available Funds. Article 3, Prior Year Bills and Deficits. Article 4, PEG Access Receipts Reserved for Appropriation. Article 5, Harbor Services Permit Receipts Reserved for Appropriation. Article 6, Fund Parking Program. Article 7, Accept Gift of Land Located at 46 Minut Avenue. Article 8, Discontinue A Portion of 11th Street and Elm Street. Article 9, Hero Act of 2024, Acceptance of Clause 22i, Veterans Exemption. Article 10, Senior Exemption Local Options Clause 41c. Article 11, Chapter 90, Section 17c, Acceptance. Article 12, Occasional Reports. Article 13, East Wareham School Exterior Restoration. Article 14, Town Hall Exterior Wall and Window Restoration. Article 15, Wee Wee Antic River Corridor Conservation Project. Article 16, Damian's Food Pantry Community Garden Phase 2. Article 17, Lopes Playground and Perimeter Pathway. Article 18, Seasonal Community Designation. And Article 19, Amendment to Zoning Bylaws, ADU Accessory Dwelling Units. And Article 19, Amendment to Zoning Bylaws, ADU Accessory Dwelling Units.
I'm going to ask you to restate a line on Article 9. It should be Clause 221, not 22I. Go ahead.
Okay. So Article number 9, HEROES Act 2024, Acceptance of Clause 221, Veterans Exemption.
Is there a second to the motion to include all of those items?
I second the motion.
Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I'd accept a motion to close the warrant.
I make a motion to close the warrant for the fall town meeting.
I second.
Motion made and seconded to close the warrant. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is closed. 48-hour business. The, well, a local business establishment was cited by this board for violation of its liquor licensing, and that finding has been appealed to the ABCC, so, Mr. Bessie, I will accept a motion, please. Under 48-hour business, we learned of the appeal yesterday, so it's appropriate to have it under 48-hour business.
So I make a motion under 48-hour business, in view of the filing of an ABCC appeal, I move that the select board stay the commencement of the suspension of Main Street Deli LLC, DBA Onset Patio and Grill until the conclusion of that appeal.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
If, if, if we could, Madam Chair, I'd love to hear Attorney Bowen address this issue.
Mr. Bowen, do you choose to address the issue?
For a board member work, how could I resist? The, yes, it's considered good practice that when someone takes an appeal of a suspension, that you stay the suspension pending the result of the appeal. That way, the appeal isn't rendered futile. That way, the board is not exposed to, you know, any claim that it's forcing a place out of business before it gets its day in court. It's just the proper and just thing to do. The penalty, if upheld, can always be reimposed for a future date, so you lose nothing and justice is preserved.
Thank you.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you. I will accept a motion. You made the motion.
Yes.
May I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to suspend or to postpone the suspension. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. For the record, this information will be transmitted to the owner, Mr. Evangelista, tomorrow by several methods, and we have included all of the individuals who need to be notified about a closing or a proposed closing of a business with a liquor license. Okay, I think that's it, town administrators' report. We did everything as well.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Today I was at Bayview Park and Highland Ave, looking over the progress. Highland Avenue, which is, they're doing the work from 10th Street down to Onset Ave. They're pouring the new sidewalks in as, well, they were, many of them were poured today, looking really good, cleaning the area up nicely. The Bayview Park project has kicked off. The sidewalks have been removed, monuments temporarily moved. I was excited to see the width of the sidewalk along Onset Ave. That's really, if you remember the old one, it was really, really pretty small, so it's nice width to it. It's going to be a great project, so, and the accessibility, but also just the usability of the whole park, and it's really exciting to see the outcome, so. And once again, the municipal maintenance department has gone above and beyond. All set Onset Waters in there, helping out. They've moved hydrants to make sure that some of the sidewalks would not have to be shrunk down, so really a lot, got a lot of good teamwork on it. Another exciting thing is we're working on the first public electric vehicle charging station in one of our municipal lots, and that's Pizzoli Square, and we're looking to have two dual-head, Level 3 charging stations. And just so you know, between Eversource and, I guess, they're called tax rebates, but since we don't file tax rebates, they're essentially a grant, but the way it works, through the Inflation Reduction Act credits, the cost at town's approximately $8,000. It's really about 7,200-something, but 8,000, and we'll probably consider it closer to 35,000 with contingency. Just so everybody knows, this is, this is over $250,000 project, so the level of grants and from Eversource, again, the Inflation Reduction Act are incredible. A Level 3 charging station will, will charge your vehicle 100, for 100 miles to 250 miles in a vehicle within 30 to 45 minutes, so they're really attractive to electric vehicle drivers. We're still procuring the equipment, but I've been, been utilizing Weston and Sampson on the process. They'll be paid to charge stations, and once they're set up, I'm going to recommend we set up a revolving account for them so that the revenue that comes in, you know, after the cost of the energy, et cetera, goes into those revolving accounts for the maintenance and repair of the, of the charging stations. Once we're done with this, we've got the process down, we expect to put, put a couple more throughout the whole community, so pretty excited about it. And one of the goals, one of the nice things about it is you put something like that downtown. We had somebody call about two, three weeks ago, they'd gone up to Boston from the Cape to visit their, visit their daughter, didn't end up being able to charge up there, and, you know, they came down and they thought that there's a charging station over by the Stop &amp; Shop, but it wasn't running, and they basically had to stay the night. So having the Level 3 charging station there, I think it can be a little mini boon for some of the downtown businesses. Bring people in for an hour plus to patronize them, maybe get something to eat, maybe, you know, as we continue their revitalization, do a little bit of shopping, so. I think it's a nice economic development tool. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Then liaison board comments, Ms. Quirk?
I have none.
Mr. Bessie?
I have none for tonight.
Okay. I have none. You, we were all sent a new copy of the assignments for liaisons and boards and chairs and things like that, and I'd ask that you, if you have changes, that you send them to the office, please, okay?
Madam Chair.
I noticed that the liaison for the bylaw review committee slot is empty. I had assumed that you were going to take that, but if you don't want it, I'll take it, because I was, as you know, the chair, and-
Oh, you just volunteered.
I didn't even have to be volunt-
You didn't have to be voluntold.
You didn't have to be voluntold. I think that's great. Would you add that to any comments that, yeah, thank you. Any others? Nope. We have two sets of minutes, Mr. Bessie, please.
I make a motion to approve the select board meeting minutes of August 20th, 2024, and September 3rd, 2024.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve those minutes. Is there any further discussion on those? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, they have been approved. Is there any further business to come before this board? Mr. Sullivan? Ms. Quirk?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion to adjourn is not debatable, and I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, we are adjourned at 7:39. Thank you very much, Wareham, and good evening.